I call this meeting a Lima City Council's order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Adams, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
As we open this meeting, Lord, we want to give honor to you. Thank you, God, for the time we have today to discuss issues and make decisions. May you bless each person who took the time to gather here today and let your hand of protection be on them throughout the rest of the week. Let the work we're doing here tonight come to fruition and let it all be for your glory. Help us each to do our parts to bring the plans discussed to life. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Ms. Crayer.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that we amend the agenda and add Rachel Gilroy to the privilege of the floor.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding Rachel Gilroy to the privilege of the floor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, we have Reverend Bob Horton. I'll remind all of our speakers this evening, the rules of council allow for three minutes under privilege of the floor. We ask you to state your name and address before you start to speak.
Okay, Bob Horton, 708 North Baxter Street, Lima, Ohio. And I must add, as I speak, parents, citizens, leaders, let your voice be heard. It has been a few years, few years, since there have been a shooting of a citizen in the city by a Lima policeman, a few years. You know, we learned from that. Since then, the Lima Police Department have implemented more police training to keep this from happening again. The problem we have today is neighbors, shooting neighbors. Friends, shooting friends. Enemies, shooting enemies. Regardless of race or color. This madness need to stop now. And the citizens, parents, and leaders of this community of Lima need to girt themselves up and tell the young and middle-aged people there's a better way, a better way, and a better solution to solve conflict. Listen, there will always be disagreement, but we don't have to be disagreeable. From where I sit, the main culprit that is causing a large percentage of the shooting is drugs. Some might not like to hear that, but that's the truth, drugs. Please think on this. As the great Apostle Paul say, and he tells us in First Thessalonians 5:22, abstain from all appearance of evil. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Horton. Next is Ronnie Lawrence.
My name is Roddy Lawrence, 586 South Baxter, 586 Cortland Avenue. And my concern is this, I have to get off work right now just to address this issue right now. I work at Ford. This month, for the last one, one, sixteen, I have been stopped eight times coming from work. Twelve seven fifteen, twelve eighteen, twelve twenty-nine fifteen, one twenty-nine sixteen, two-ten sixteen, two-twelve sixteen, two-thirteen sixteens. And since three-ten of ten, I have been stopped nineteen times. No tickets. Sirs, I'm too old to keep getting out the car. These cops grabbing my genitals, saying they smell drugs, which I know they don't. The other night, I got stopped again. I'm at Ford, coming from work fourteen hours. Put the dogs on the car, said he smelled drugs. No, that's not happening. It's just that, what is going on? I got two tickets last time for a license plate in my windshield. Okay, he said I was doing thirty-three in a twenty-five. Okay, he said I was speeding. He gave me a license plate, for the license plate being in the windshield. Okay, I went to court, they did what they had to do. A week later, the same cops give me the same ticket again. What is going on? This is a concern to me. As a fifty-six-year-old man, I can't come home from Ford and get stopped? I have been stopped eight times since the first of the year. For what? For what? They're not finding nothing in my car, didn't make it so bad. I had a little hole in my seat, leather. He ripped it open. You think I could prove that? No, no. I am a taxpaying citizen and I'm tired of being stopped and tired of being watching my daughter watch me while they're searching all my genitals. I just can't do it no more. What do I do? Who do I talk to? Is it a concern? I'm a concerned citizen now. If I have to, I will get every one of these meetings now. I will, if I have to. This is too much for me. My daughters can't keep seeing me when I go pick them up after work, watch me get searched. You mean to tell me, if you don't, you got license, registration, and assurance, you're not allowed to go nowhere? You're not allowed to go nowhere? Nowhere. If I, in the summertime, I drive a white Mercedes-Benz, drop-top. I cannot go nowhere without being stopped. Nowhere. One night, I got stopped three times. This is too much for me. It's too much. That's all I gotta say. That's all I gotta say.
Next, under privilege of the floor, is Robert Richardson. Is Robert Richardson here? Finally, under privilege of the floor, is Rachel Gilroy. Who, as we understand it, is celebrating her twenty-fourth anniversary this evening. And congratulations and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I'm Rachel Gilroy. I live at 10,001 Craft Road in Spencerville. I appreciate the invitation to speak here tonight. I'm beginning my thirty years treasurer of Allen County. And I've had a lot of time to observe problem areas in the county and inside the city of Lima. I'm excited to tell you about a new initiative that has the power to transform the landscape of the city of Lima and Allen County over the next few years. The scope of this project is tremendous, so I'll do my best to summarize it for you in the next three minutes. I've been researching the idea of a county land bank for the last year. The end of December, I became aware of the possibility of a second round of federal grant funding coming to Ohio. This funding has been reserved for demolitions in the area. Assuming the funds follow the prior requirements of prior rounds, these funds will only be made available to those counties that have county land banks. The Ohio Revised Code mandates that the county treasurers only can form the county land banks. A county land bank is a private, non-governmental corporation that has the mission of acquiring and reutilizing abandoned vacant tax delinquent land. Under authorization by the county commissioners, I filed Articles of Incorporation in January. We had our first organizational meeting last week and seated our Board of Directors. The composition of the board is determined by statute. It consists of two county commissioners, the county treasurer, a representative from the largest municipality in the county, in this case, the city of Lima, and Mayor Berger has appointed Amy Odom to the board, and a representative from the largest townships in the area. The largest townships have to be over ten thousand in population, and they have to agree on one representative. American and Shawnee Townships have agreed on Bill Heidel, who is the zoning commissioner for American Township. On the board, we're all committed to seeing this project succeed in Allen County. We will be setting our remaining policies and procedures over the next few weeks and plan to have our board up and running in time to plan for this application for the grant funds that will be coming shortly in the next few weeks or a month. It was announced just this last week that ninety-seven million dollars is coming to Ohio for this program, with the possibility of another two-hundred-and-fifty million over the next year or so. And we plan to bring several million, hopefully, back to Allen County. This will give us the funding needed to demo several hundred houses and home vacant structures throughout the county and the city of Lima. We can then return those properties cleaned up, nice and new, into the community. It will only work with the assistance, support, and encouragement of all the townships, villages, and the cities in the county. It's a tremendous project, and it has the ability to transform the landscape of Allen County in the next few years. I'm excited about it. I learn more about the details, the possibilities for this land bank every single week as we move forward. And I'm excited to see what we can do, and I'm excited to work with everyone that's involved. Thank you.
Is there anything you need from council?
At this time, no. Although I do anticipate in the future, we will be asking for some MOUs as we work with the mayor, with Amy Odom, with departments within the city.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, Mr. President. I thank you so much for coming, and we have a small token for you and Kevin here. Appreciate you coming out here for your thing. Let's get going.
Thank you very much.
Stand up, Kevin. Congratulations. And many more, and then hopefully many more where you don't have to spend it here. Some of us do, so it is, it's not bad. It's not bad. Okay.
It was fun. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation placed tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
Yes. I move the communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation placed demolition assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move the communication two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation for CRA application for Ruler Foods.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
I move the communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
We have representatives here from the Kroger organization. I would like to ask for them to come forward maybe and speak for a couple minutes on this great project that they have coming to Lima, Ohio. Hi, my name is Joe Hodge with the Kroger Company, 1014 Vine Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. I am the manager of economic credits and incentives for the company. We have currently one Ruler Foods store in Lima on a lighter road, and it is doing a tremendous business. And at this point, we look, we would like to open a second store and not ruling out more than the second store, but we think Lima's been a great market for us, and we look forward to putting a second store in this location to serve an area that we think is underserved from a grocery perspective and be a good fit with that neighborhood right there. This is Chris Clemmons. He's with, I'll let him introduce himself.
Sure. I'm Chris Clemmons. I'm an associate at Boise Sater Seymour MPs in Columbus, Ohio. And as Joe mentioned, I represent Kroger.
Okay. And for those at home that are listening, this location, again, it's been advertised, but it'll be on West Street and McDonald.
West Elm.
West Elm, sorry. West Elm and McDonald. I had West in my head. West Elm and McDonald. And really looking forward to this. I've had a couple conversations with individuals who are looking forward to this. And I ask that this building is being put up. It is a beautiful picture. I just seen it before I came out, that the neighbors I know will be respectful of the building and be receptive. Thank you. And we look forward to being part of the community.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I'm excited that Kroger's in the community, because I have a long history of working. And my very first job was working for Kroger at the very location where Ruler Foods is on a lighter road. I was there till after they closed, working. And so I wanted to welcome you back.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yeah. Coming back to Lima's been a good experience for us, and we look forward to being here many years to come.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I would just want to make note, other council members, I've attended the design review board. And the representatives from Kroger, the architect have been very cooperative, very responsive, even paid a visit to the board to review and make some minor changes that the board felt would help the area, neighborhood. And I want to thank you for your cooperation, and they're excited also, as I am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'd say welcome again. And I gave a call up there to Kroger, and they were saying about they will be a part of the Neighborhood Association, win-win for our neighborhood, also for Lima, too. Hope you guys do a lot of sponsorship and get involved in the community.
We do a lot of donations. It's done on the local store level. So that manager will be part of that Neighborhood Association, and it is a core principle of our company.
Yep. That's great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Welcome back to Lima again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to purchase driveway for the all sixty-five eight-point-oh-two Y-Bank project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with ODOT for purchasing services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number five be received and filed. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a final legislation with ODOT and make payment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number six be received and filed. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for two thousand and sixteen budget.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Mayor regarding the appointment of Chuck Sherlow to the reappointment, and the reappointment of Suzanne Plum to the City Planning Commission.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Auditor regarding the contract link report.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. Detective Scott Leland.
I was told I had two minutes, five minutes by him, so I...
Hold on, by Capralla.
And if I go over, somebody has to buy somebody lunch or something.
It's baloney. Especially if it came from Capralla. I'm not going to tell you what that is. Look at the job title, do your math, okay?
For those of you who don't know me, my name's Scott Leland. I've worked with a lot of you in the past. I'm a detective with the police department. I've been there twenty-three some odd years. I hope you'll indulge me for a couple minutes, because I want to give you a little bit of a history lesson on computers. About a hundred and ninety-four years ago, there was a guy named Charles Babbage, and he created a crank device. It was considered the first mechanical computer. It was called a difference machine. And as the years have gone by, computers have changed. Fifty, forty-five years ago, Steve Jobs started Apple. Forty-one years ago, Bill Gates founded Microsoft. Forty years ago, if you wanted to eavesdrop on somebody, like the government does in that NSA Snowden thing, all you had to do was pick up your party line telephone. And if you did it really quietly, you could hear your neighbors talking. So things have come a long way. In eighty-one, IBM came out with the first personal computer, first desktop. And eighty-nine, Microsoft rolled out its first copy of Windows. I got my first computer in nineteen ninety-five. It had a one-gigabyte hard drive. One gigabyte. People told me, you will never, ever, ever fill that hard drive. I did. My next computer was a hundred and twenty gigabytes. Boy, that was huge, over one. And to put that in perspective, if I took this piece of paper and I filled this piece of paper with typing from the very start to the very end, and I filled enough pieces of paper to put, to fill a hundred and twenty gigabyte hard drive, that'd be two-point-seven miles of paper stacked in the air. That's as tall as Mount Rainier. Nowadays, the average computer hard drive is about a terabyte. Terabyte is one thousand twenty-four gigabytes. So it's really, really increased, data is. In two thousand, the Lima Police Department really was ahead of its time and decided they were going to send some guys away to get training in computer forensic sciences. And they created a small computer lab in a closet on the second floor, and they bought a small computer, and they did two or three computer examinations a year. In two thousand and five, Lima Police Department joined the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force out of Cleveland, Ohio, which is now an international task force, and we are still members of. And we started training these examiners to do more in-depth examinations. In two thousand and six, Lima Police Department added the ability to do forensic examinations on cell phones to their repertoire. In two thousand and nine, a plan was set in place to work in collaboration with other agencies in the area to further train and expand our ability to do computer forensics on evidence items. In two thousand and ten, we joined the Federal Bureau of Investigation Cybercrime Task Force. And that was at that very time, we formed a memorandum of understanding with several agencies and created the Northwest Ohio Technologies Crime Unit, which is what we currently are today. We currently have, I think, fifteen or sixteen active agencies that participate in our task force, and we actually served, I think, twenty-four different agencies last year. In two thousand and thirteen, I got assigned to the task force, or Northwest Ohio Technology Crime Unit, full-time. A short time after I came on, the Allen County Sheriff's Office assigned Sergeant Terry Snery to the task force. And we did several hundred examinations in two thousand and thirteen. We started ramping up and getting more work in. And two thousand and fourteen, we conducted five hundred and three forensic examinations on evidentiary items. By two thousand and fifteen, that had increased by seventeen-point-one percent to five hundred and eighty-six exams. And I got to tell you, I think we passed ninety already for two thousand and sixteen. The Northwest Ohio Technology Crime Unit is considered by many to be a very premier lab in the state of Ohio. BCI and I, as well as the federal government, have called and asked how and why we do things the way we do. We do beta testing for several of the major software companies. And again, this is a tribute to the training and education that our examiners have received. We have been, or had our hand in the conviction of some of the worst kinds of felons that our society has to deal with. We've been responsible for hundreds of years of prison time, hopefully for some people that don't ever have to get out of jail. We currently, they talk about computer forensics, but we do a lot more than that. It's not just computers we do. It's everything digital. We do computer forensics, cellphone, video enhancement, graphics, graphic audio forensics. We can do forensic examinations on your cars. Your cars are very smart. Tablet forensics, network intrusion. And that's just a small list of what we can do. There's really, if you think about it, not a crime in today's society that cannot, at one point, in one way, be influenced by some sort of technology. And I guess they asked me to kind of tell you this tonight, and you just need to know that the Lima Police Department has this in place and that we play a major role in fighting crime in the modern age. And I'm here to tell you and guarantee you that when this comes up and these crimes get worse, that the Northwest Ohio Technology Crime Unit is there to, with your police department, to get the job done. If you got any questions, fire away. I think that was less than five.
Any questions? Thank you very much. I actually had the privilege of seeing the lab probably five or six years ago.
You wouldn't recognize it.
And it's, yeah, I can imagine. But it's fascinating, there's a lot of truth in the fact that delete doesn't delete anything.
No, it doesn't. And I would encourage, ladies and gentlemen, if you ever want to tour the lab or you want to see what we do, go through the police department, and we can get you out there. And I think you'd really get a kick out of seeing what we do. Okay?
Thank you. Next, we have reports of committees. The Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee report covered two public hearings and three committee meetings in January. All members have received a copy of the report. I would like to note a couple items. Steve Cleese, Finance Director, gave a overview of the general fund portion of the budget. Randy Bartels, the auditor, gave a short overview of terms and definitions used in a breakdown of the fund types in the city of Lima account structure. Those copies are included in your copy. And we followed the schedule that was submitted to meet with the administration, the directors. Out of the, there were some minor changes. I would like to note, finally, two major changes. One came when we were under the review of the Court Clerk Department, where we made a motion and applied funding to bring them back up as they took a voluntary cut in pay to assist Lima under the recession. So that was discussed and noted in the report. And then finally, two new positions are being created under the two thousand and sixteen budget. One in Public Works for a GIS survey manager position and one for a GIS administrative technician position for utilities. Mr. President, I move the committee report be received, filed, and approved as submitted.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Finance Committee report as submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? I just want to thank you and the committee for doing an excellent job going through the budget. I know sometimes it gets dry, and it's also very intense, and you have a lot to follow. So thank you very much to you and the committee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next is the Public Works Committee meeting.
Mr. President, the Public Works Committee met on two-nine-sixteen at four P.M. We discussed planned projects. All the counselors have received a copy of the minutes from the Public Works meeting, and I ask that they be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Committee meeting report from the Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Community and Economic Development Committee report.
Mr. President.
Ms. Crayer.
This meeting, this Community and Economic Development Committee met on February the second at six. As all members can see, they have a copy of their reports. And I would like to make a motion that be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the... The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the Community and Economic Development Committee report as submitted by Counselor Cray. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have ordinances, ordinance fourteen sixteen.
This is a third reading, authorizing the auditor to pay a fine reimbursement to Geraldine Mittera's moral obligation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Cray.
I move that ordinance fourteen dash sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Third.
Second. Okay. Motion, the second, is to pass ordinance fourteen sixteen on its third reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Cray.
I would like to make an amendment to that motion. I'd actually like to change the amount that they're asking from fourteen ninety-one seventy-two down to one thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to amend Section One by changing the amount of fourteen ninety-one point seven-two to one thousand even?
Correct.
Mr. President. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Geiger.
Would counsel want to also change the manner in which the check is made payable to exclude the body shop, since that's the amount of deductible?
I would agree with that. Thank you.
So, it strikes, strike the words "and" Jim Yager Body Shop Inc.
And the word jointly.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Mechanically, this works, that we write the check after the work is done?
No.
How's it work?
Generally, the city's past practice is when we pay a deductible, we make that checked solely to the individual. And it's up to them then to decide whether to get the work done.
So, the motion would then be, I'm gonna restate your motion, to change the amount to one thousand as previously stated, strike the word jointly, and the words "and" Jim Yager Body Shop Inc. From Section One. And authorize the law director to provide a clean copy. Got that part of the two. Is there?
I'm good with that motion.
You got a second there?
Adams, it's second.
Yeah, secondly amended.
All right. All right. So, is everybody clear then?
Yep.
Is there any discussion on the motion or the amendment? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Well, first, we're gonna vote on.
Oh, we'll get a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next, we'll have the clerk call the roll for the ordinance as amended.
Thank you. Let me see, we start with that.
Before you do that, is that procedurally correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
No.
Mr. Nixon?
No.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean isn't here. Mr. Lo?
Yes.
And Ms. Cray.
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen sixteen has been passed on its third reading by a five to two vote. Ordinance forty-three sixteen.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Cray.
I move that ordinance forty-three sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance forty-three sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was getting all excited, 'cause I'd marked Mr. McLean here.
Ordinance forty-three sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance forty-four sixteen.
Establishing the budget for the city of Lima, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance forty-four dash sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance forty-four sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I appreciate your early comments on when I was giving the report, but I too would like to thank the committee, Mrs. Miles, Ms. Cray, for their attentiveness and questions that they raised during the process. I also like to thank the administration, the directors, and, as I noted in my report, Mr. Bartels and Mr. Cleves, for their informative and guidance during the process. It is tedious, it's over three nights, and, but, it's been a great system. And I think we have a good budget going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Ms. Cray?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-four sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance forty-five sixteen.
granting arts-based Lima permission to maintain and use a stage in the northwest quadrant of the city square for the arts-based rally in the square series.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo?
I move that ordinance forty-five sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance forty-five sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
And Ms. Cray.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-five sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a CRA tax exemption agreement with Kroger Limited Partnership.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo?
I move that ordinance forty-six sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance forty-six sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
And Ms. Cray.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-six sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance forty-seven sixteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of sodium fluoride.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance forty-seven sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance forty-seven sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I'd like to ask Mr. Elstro, since there was a report, I think, middle, end of last week, concerning the use and the lack of, due to the mild winter of salt, I think we were told we'd used about twenty percent of what we had. Is that what you're looking to replace, to bring it to the level, start out next year, or are you getting more?
President Nixon and counsel, this contract would, or this authorization would allow us to purchase salt from the Ohio Department of Transportation annual sale of salt at their cost. And the cost is yet to be determined. This only allows us to submit a quantity and lock in for a purchase, plus or minus some percentage. To your question, as to the light season thus far, we have not used as much salt as we anticipated. We have some pretty healthy stores right now, about seventeen hundred tons in storage. And we also have a commitment to buy another seven hundred tons. Remind counsel that this is February. We've seen some of the worst winter experiences in the month of March, so the jury is still out how much salt we will yet use. Having said that, again, the authorization tonight allows us to purchase salt. What we have seen traditionally, meaning the last couple of years from ODOT, is that there will be a spring offering, and then a fall purchase. So, this would allow us to make those decisions at either the spring, which, quite frankly, we will not, we will not be entering into any kind of agreements for the spring. But it also leaves the door open, that if we do spend some money in March, and spend the product down, we can replenish that with a fall purchase.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
And Ms. Cray.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-seven sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance forty-eight sixteen.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I'm sorry. I switched around.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead of you.
Approving and authorizing the execution of ODOT final resolution, entering the contract and dispersals for the completion of the All SR-6581-117309 PID-88840 project.
Okay. Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance forty-eight sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance forty-eight sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Cray?
Yes.
Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Adams?
Or...
You have to wait.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Got me.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Cray.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-eight sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Mr. Gordon?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon? Well, would you...
I would like to make a motion to receive, file, and approve the fiscal certificates, fiscal officer certificate.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the fiscal officer certificate. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have ordinance forty-nine sixteen.
Authorizing the mayor to purchase certain real property and easements for the All Sixty-Five Eight Point O Two Lightning Project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance forty-nine sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance forty-nine sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Or we could do a roll call. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
There are full moons.
Yes, actually, there is a full moon, and we had seventy-degree weather over the weekend in February. Okay? We're all a little off.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
And Ms. Cray.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-nine sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance fifty sixteen.
Loving a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Ms. Cray.
I move that ordinance fifty dash sixteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance fifty sixteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
And Ms. Cray.
Yes.
Ordinance fifty sixteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Next is miscellaneous business. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. What I wanted to say earlier was, and you pointed out the weather and all that that we recently experienced, but I think our clerk is getting wore out with the basketball season. She's a diehard attendee of the games, and follows them very closely, and I'll be glad. Hopefully, the season will not end soon, but we'll end it and bring back a championship for both, all divisions that are of interest. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that I hope Counselor Glenn and Counselor Gordon, who's chairman of the Public Works, will approve. And the motion is to remove the moral obligation from Public Works Committee, and to move it to Counsel of the whole.
Second. Sorry.
The motion, the second, is to move the issue of handling of moral obligation requests from Public Works Committee to Counsel of the whole. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I feel that we all need to be at the table for this discussion, and it not be in just one committee. And this committee affects other committees that the moral obligation touches on. And I think we each, as we each chair a committee and serve on others, I think we all need to be at the table for that discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Geiger?
I would ask counsel to consider broadening the referral motion to include the claims process in general as well.
Okay.
Mr. Bartels and I have had some preliminary discussion on some modifications we might want to make to the process itself, in addition to just moral obligations.
Okay. So amended?
Who had the second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? So, the motion is to, I'll restate it, to move the issue of handling of moral obligation claims, and a discussion on the claims appeal process from the Public Works Committee to Counsel of the whole. Okay? All those... Mr. Lo?
I think we should wait till we have a full council, out of respect to the other councilmen. That's a big change.
I understand your concern, Mr. Lo, but I mean, the motion is to move it to Counsel of the whole. It certainly is more inclusive rather than preclusive of the absent member. So, I think that just having the motion and voting on that motion would, is certainly not inappropriate. So, I will ask for a roll call, vote on the motion.
Okay. Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mrs.... Mrs....Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Mr. Low?
No.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. So the motion is approved by a six to one vote.
Mr. President, I'd like to announce Hope Neighborhood Meeting is starting back up. They take a winter break, and their next meeting will be March 1st at Unity. It's Tuesday at 6:30, and looking forward to seeing everyone after these last three winter months. And, Mr. President, I had planned to address an issue that was brought before counsel of past ordinances that were handled under more obligations. I will leave that for the discussion of counsel of the whole. But I would like to make two comments, two comments that were made at the last meeting. One was concerning the more obligation failing to come out of committee. I'm aware of four that have failed to come out of committees, two in utilities and two in public works. And the second comment and information for all of counsel is a comment that we look like we only average one more obligation a year. I asked the law director to go back pretty much the same time period, and on average, the claims advisory board received 32 claims in a calendar year. And I would caution counsel going forward when we enter into discussion on this, there is no cookie cutter solution that fits all claims. And I look forward to the discussion. Again, as I said, as we all chair committees, we all serve on other committees, I think it better serves that we're all at the table to have this discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I've got a couple of things here. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who helped out at the Miss Paul Community Center there, and we had a lot of folks came out to help, working on doing some cleaning up and different things. We are working on raising money for the center there. We have a pledge sheet that we got out that you could have money taken out to checking account to help the Miss Paul Community Center out. So we're trying to find ways to keep things going. And we got a lot of kids down there. They're at the school program, and we appreciate the Rose State and Ohio Northern and Bluffton College allowing their students to come now to help tutor the kids. So we have some folks come out for that, to help out, take a pledge sheet, do a donation of $10, $20 a month for a one-time offer. But we are trying to be self-dependent on things. So instead of continuing going out, asking people for support, they're going to try to do it on our own there a little bit more. Also, we're going to have healthcare checkup there, New Vision Nursing Home, Home Care will be coming out there on March 8th. On March 8th there, they're going to be checking out blood, sugar, weight. This is a new organization that came in town, and they want to get involved in some. So we'll be at the Miss Paul, we'll be there from 9:00 to 12:00. That'll be on Tuesday at the Miss Paul Community Center. Also, we are working on helping our young lady that need a handicap ramp there. I know I'll be talking about that next week and trying to get things together for the materials for that. And our alleys has almost been completed on some of the alleys, and I know Ms. Rogers gave me another alley, and I appreciate the guys. Since we had good weather, they've been getting around, getting some of the alleys done and get some of the, I mean, put rocks out there. So we are happy with that. I know a lot of folks say they're doing it early, but we had good weather there. And also, we are working on, so I know a lot of folks have been calling about the paint program. I'm working really hard on that to make that happen, because we want to make sure we get some of these houses. Some of the folks could not afford to get their house painted. We're working on that. So I'm working on that and trying to get, I've got a couple of things I've got to do. We might not be able to hit about 100 houses, you know, we might get enough paint for 100 houses, but we will make sure that we spread it all out to everybody, not just the sixth ward, everybody will be eligible for that. I don't, I don't really want to put nothing together saying that eligibility sheet, just if your house needs to be painted, we're going to try to get it done. Also, we're working with a team, trying to get that together and work, we go out there and paint the house. Couple of professionals that will be out there working on to have someone that says they can paint and cannot paint, but we're going to make sure we get it done there. We had a couple COVID enforcement, we got that done. I appreciate them working hard on that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the Westgate Neighborhood Association meeting last night, we had a great presentation by Leanne Shade, talking about scams. That was very, very informative. But at the end of the discussion, the question was asked about what laws have any or what ordinance are in place to handle the ever-increasing number of panhandlers that we're seeing in our community. At, you know, most of you are probably aware that it seems like almost on every corner now, there's, there's someone out there with a sign looking for money here. So I emailed Tony Geiger, law director, this morning to see, you know, if there were anything in place, you know, that, that can be done about the panhandling. So I asked him tonight if he would speak on behalf of that subject.
Mr. President? Mr. Geiger?
Thank you, Counsel Miles. The short answer is there really is nothing that ultimately will be effective that can be put into place. Panhandling, begging, those forms of solicitation actually are protected by the United States Constitution as a First Amendment right, freedom of speech, and it's been very clearly recognized by the United States Supreme Court as well as the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which governs the state of Ohio. There are some process-type limitations that can, can be put into place in terms of attempting to regulate panhandlers themselves by virtue of requiring registration, some location restrictions in terms of the nearness to intersections, ATM machines, banks, driveway entrances, things like that. But in general, those types of restrictions don't work because they simply move to another location that is equally populous in place. So if you spend some time on the internet looking at other cities in the state of Ohio, you'll find, as well as the United States entirely, you'll find it's a, it's a problem throughout the whole country, governed mostly, most often it appears, by homelessness, and people are destitute, and they have a constitutional right to ask for money. So I guess the bottom line is that there's not a lot that counsel can do that I think would be particularly effective.
Mrs. Miles?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Geiger. I just wanted the information to go out because I know a lot of people in the community are looking, you know, for, for what we can do, because it was, it was a huge conversation last night at our, at our neighborhood association here. Thank you again. One last thing here, just want to say congratulations to Lima Senior High on their perfect basketball season, had a great game on Saturday night here, really hyped up. And then I want to say best of luck to all the local basketball teams in their tournament run. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon?
Yeah. I wanted to make mention because at the North End Neighborhood Association meeting, the same folks from the Lima Police Department come out. And, and that was, they did a great presentation on the phone scams, and so I wanted to make mention of it as well. And actually, there had been, these attempts have been going on for a long time, and even in, my grandmother that recently passed was called by one of them phone scams in another town. So, you know, I wanted to make mention of it so people are aware. So, you got hit with it twice, with me and Ann. The next thing is that here recently, I had a, through social media, I had a lot of people share a lot of information with me, and if any of them are watching, I just wanted to let you know that I'm compiling that information, and we'll be working on some of these things that folks were talking about. And already with Mr. Staley, we've already talked tonight about a deal, what's going on in the park. So I just wanted to make mention of that so people know that I just, that I'm listening and that I will be working on this. And with that, let's get, put in mind that I'd like to, myself, I'm going to, for the first ward, I'm going to create a survey, and I'm going to be personally going around through the summertime and talking to people and getting their fill on the neighborhood and seeing what we can do to make the neighborhoods better. And then also, if there, I know there's one minister sitting in the room, if he's awake over there, are you awake over there? Yeah, I'm going to harass. You know, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the church leaders in the city, and here I go mixing religion and politics again. But what I would like to do is be approached by church leaders from all over this area. It don't have to be the minister, but I'd just like to hear from them, because I would like to maybe have something we might, I'm making stuff up as I'm talking here, but maybe something like a citywide day of prayer, something similar to that. And, and so I'd like the church leaders to, to get with me and see if there's something that, you know, really they could do to organize this type of thing, but I'd like to be involved in it. Because I think if we're going to bring change, you know, as far as what people are seeing, because guys like that guy across the room's been working on stuff, and this guy here for years, okay, to make this city better, okay? So I would like to, you know, at least myself, be involved in something like that. So if any ministers are listening, you know, yes, I am taking it there. And the last thing, I know you thought I was taking over from Mr. Glenn, didn't you? The last thing is, I'd like to remind people to be good to each other. Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Low?
Thank you. I wanted to address Mr. Lawrence's concerns, but I was going to ask the chief before I did, did you speak with him to get his information? Did you speak with him? Okay, then I'll let y'all handle that. Something else in your neck of the woods here, the walking in the streets is getting ridiculous. And I had one young lady tell me that I, on my street, the kids after school are walking right down the middle of the street, and she says, "I see officers pass them, and they don't do anything." Now, I can't prove that she's right. I can't prove that LPD is right. But what is the policy on that, chief? If you could speak, and what are the repercussions of Jay walking and just walking in the street? Because the message that I'm getting is, these kids feel that they're concrete, and they will not move. And if they were to hit them in their vehicle, that fault lies on them.
Well, Mr. Low, Mr. President, walking in the street where sidewalks are provided is a misdemeanor, minor misdemeanor traffic offense. Also, walking in the street, even if there are no sidewalks provided, the law still allows for a very specific manner in which pedestrians are to walk in the street. That would be on the left side of the roadway facing traffic as close as practicable to the edge of the roadway. And to be walking out in the middle of the street under those circumstances would again be a minor misdemeanor traffic violation, meaning the person could receive a citation. We do not have a zero tolerance policy on that ordinance any more than we have on any other ordinance. And I say that because if we had a zero tolerance policy, that would mean then that, for instance, say, an officer's on their way to a domestic violence in which there's potential for somebody being seriously injured, but they saw a person walking in the street, they'd have to stop and issue a ticket. However, our instructions to the officers are that when they see someone's walking in the street, if the situation allows them to another drift, they're not on their way to something that has higher priority. We ask them to, at the very least, give a warning to the person. We do not often write citations unless the officer is familiar with the person, knows that they've received warnings before, and the warnings haven't been affected. Then in those cases, we normally will issue traffic citations.
Okay. The other issue is, in the North Main area, and I've called and asked what to do, there is a group home that sits directly where the Syford-Hossman Power Company used to be. And there's individuals that are upset because there's a couple individuals who have the powered wheelchairs, the hover arms, and there's plenty of sidewalk on both sides of the street. And one individual complains that his back hurts, and he cannot take the sidewalks. But it amazes me, especially where the unemployment office used to be, from there all the way down to White Wizard, that sidewalk is pretty nice, but they refuse. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I did take pictures of a couple individuals, but there's cars, if they're headed east on Grand and head south on Main, they've almost hit this individual twice. I've watched it. And then the other car actually tapped them. So, and he had on, he did have on reflective gear, he did have the orange antennas. But you're not looking for someone to be in the street, you know, well, you shouldn't be. You should be, but, you know, saying, if you're used to making that turn going south from Main Street all the time, I'm scared that he or she is going to get hit. My thing is, again, with law enforcement, will you stop them and direct them to get back up on the sidewalks?
Well, the problem we have there, Mr. Low, is that in addition to there being sidewalks, are those sidewalks accessible under the terms of the ADA?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Well, again, that...
With the new ramps, the city has put in money, put in the new ramps and everything.
But, but again, then if you get into where the sidewalks perhaps have defects in them or that along through there, again, it may be something that to a normal pedestrian would not be a problem, me walking down there or jogging down through that sidewalk might not be an issue, but someone in a wheelchair might be, and, and that's where it gets into other issues there. And under the higher revised code, again, someone in a motorized wheelchair of that type is allowed to be out in the street following the rules of a pedestrian if the sidewalk is not passable.
Okay. And then following that rules, is that going against traffic?
Technically, yes, it should be. But now, I know that is one of those things where a lot of people might get confused because they're thinking, okay, if it's a motorized wheelchair, should they be going in the same direction as the traffic?
It's happening a lot.
But, and, and that's something that, you know, again, we could, if we see somebody that's created a traffic hazard, we can certainly stop and talk to them. But as far as enforcement action, we're going to be limited in terms of the amount of enforcement action we can take, because again, the burden of proof on the sidewalk being passable and that sort of thing is on us, it would not be on the individual being cited. Am I inaccurate in that, Mr. Geiger?
Okay, thank you.
The other thing is, on March 7th at 5:00 PM, I want to call the Neighborhood Concerns Meeting, addressing trash, litter and zoning.
Second.
It's just an announcement?
It's not been referred, hasn't been referred.
To Neighborhood Concerns Committee?
It hasn't been referred to the Neighborhood Concerns.
That's what I was doing.
Oh, you just said one.
No, you called me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to refer it to Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
What was it again? I'm sorry.
Say that again.
The concerns are addressing trash, litter and zoning issues.
That needs a second, doesn't it?
Yes.
Second.
That's what I thought.
Okay, all right. The motion, the second, is to refer the issues of trash, litter and zoning to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I would also like to make a motion that Mr. McLean also has authorized for pay.
Second.
Is it a second?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion, the second, is to approve the absence and salary of Counselor McLean. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Okay.
Ms. Crayer?
My turn. All right, a couple of things. This weekend, on Saturday, there will be a Love Lima kickoff event. If you're not familiar with this Love Lima campaign, I encourage you to go to Facebook. It really has been a great campaign and encourages people to get more involved in the community, to fight against the negativity that gets passed around pretty easily. And so this weekend, there will be a kickoff event that's in tandem with the Lima Express. That'll be Saturday at 3:05 at the LCC Gymnasium. If you're not familiar with this campaign, I do encourage you to go to Facebook and you just search for Love Lima, and it will not be hard to find. So that's one. Two is on Wednesday, March 2nd, the Boulevard Neighborhood Association at 7:00 PM will be meeting. If you live in or around that association's areas of the Boulevard, Market Street Boulevard, I encourage you to come. If you're looking for a place to come to, I also encourage you to come. We have a brand-new president this year, Shannon Wanamaker will be taking over, so we expect some new and exciting and great things from her. Also, I've already started to have questions about the Ottawa River Cleanup. That is coming in April on the 23rd. So for all of you who are looking forward to that event, put it in your calendars now and get your teams ready. That'll be 9:00 to noon, and that'll start, or that'll be at the Red Cross Building. Chuck in. Mr. President, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I don't have anything this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, I move that counsel adjourn until March 7th at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
Second.
The motion, the second, is that Lima City Council will adjourn until March 7th at 7:00 PM. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.